What are you all pulling from that consent? I can't get my thing to come up, of course. It's thinking. I'll be sad to get rid of this. Yeah, I can't find my packet email. Benefits? The benefits. You're not pulling either? I'm gonna, just got a couple of questions. Yeah, if I can't see it, then there's a lot of things in there. I don't know if I'm not counted.
Six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order if we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That'll take us to public comments, if there's anything that anyone would like to discuss that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and we'll move to the consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion or any clarifications needed?
I just need to make some amendments to the October twenty-six, twenty twenty city council meeting minutes. So, under also present would be Sergeant, Sergeant James Clark. And then in the minutes would also need the addition of Sergeant James Clark under approved resolution Sheriff's Department contract. And then under discussion of the issuance of conduit revenue note for Mayor Luthman High School, just changing that to say, Mr. Lance Groner mentioned that there will be a request to, to the city to waive the administrative fee. And then at the bottom, Mayor Dodge directed staff to add discussion on waiving the twenty-five thousand admin fee to, we're gonna change that to a future city council meeting. And then I'm also gonna pull the CARES Act, October Resolution eleven dot zero nine dot two zero dot four seven and put it under seven one C for further discussion.
All right, can I get, yeah, can I get the audit pulled, I've got some questions, the financial audit E.
Do you want to pull, or do you just, do you want to get the questions clarified, or do you want to have this question?
I think that one we should pull.
Okay.
And then just a question on the, the employee benefits resolution.
Okay.
Was the, the CBA consulted and did that fall within the guidelines of what we had set for any increases in benefits?
Yep, everything that is in that resolution reflects what we bargained for. And the increase was for their health insurance and dental was four point seven percent, sixty dollars per month per employee. And that is, falls within the five pers, first five percent is covered by the city, anything above that is covered by the employee.
I just wanted to kind of clarify, because, just for public purposes.
Yep.
I have the same question, but as long as it's clarified, it's so people are aware of it, so it's the contract. And that's why it's on the consent agenda, because the contract just states up to five percent, the city will cover it, six to ten percent, the employees would cover it, anything above ten percent, it would be split fifty fifty if it was that big of an increase. Thank you for that clarification, anything more on that one, Tice on the?
No, that was mine.
So, do you want the financial audit brought back to a future meeting, or?
So, we'll have to move on it, right, if we move it down here, we'll have to make a motion on it, I just have questions about?
You don't have to make a motion on it, but yes, it would be, by moving it down, we could answer questions and decide if a motion should be made.
Move to seven one D. So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes to the meeting minutes, the addition of the, the Sheriff's Department who was here, and the changes to the conduit revenue, section two. Removal of the CARES Act, which will be discussed at seven one C, removal of the financial audit E, which will now be seven one D.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, Maggie, that'll take us to the public hearing. We will open the public hearing.
All right, oh, yep. So, city current, as you know, we, at a previous city council meeting, we did discuss amending our ordinance to allow some ATV vehicles within the city limits. Currently, the city prohibit, prohibits the operation of ATVs on municipal streets under chapter seventy-two. Upon further investigation, we did create a draft ordinance that aligns more with state statute. State statute permits the operation of class-two ATVs, which are multi-passenger vehicles within a width of fifty inches and sixty-five inches from rim to rim on roadways with provisions. They're commonly referred to as side-by-sides, or UTVs, and these vehicles feature a steering wheel, roll cage, and seating for two or more people. State statute also allows for the operation of these vehicles on state highways, state aid roads, the county allows them on county roads, and then gives the option to local jurisdictions to regulate the operation on municipal roads. So as mentioned previously, the city doesn't currently allow them, but we are aware that some people use these, some businesses use these for business purposes, such as plowing snow. So they, and therefore the city council has been approached to review it, the ordinance. So staff prepared the included ordinance with suggested changes. Those are, those that are being eliminated would be slashed out, and then those being added would be underlined. So the changes would allow for the operation of class-two ATVs on municipal streets and tie lawful operation provisions to those contained in state statute. It includes where on the roadway they can operate the appropriate equipment registration and licensing provisions. Class-one ATVs, or four-wheelers, would still not be permitted to operate on municipal streets, as they are not permitted to operate on state or county roads either.
Is anyone who would like to speak to the proposed ordinance, please come forward. If you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Melissa Gomes, in one-six-eight-two Hidden Trail. My family has a UTV, and just being able to like take our daughters out and, you know, take a trip to Casey's to get a treat in the summertime, or just to go to a park, you know, I think that would be nice for our family to be able to do that. And I have seen them on the road, I know it's not legal, but anyone that I've seen driving appears to be driving safely, and I don't see an issue with it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a question, when we, we put in here for the width, the fifty to sixty-five inches, is that, where did you get that?
That was under the definition, under state statute.
I don't see anything about trails, though, so if trails are sidewalks, are still gonna be illegal to operate on a trail and sidewalk?
Illegal? Yes, yep.
Can we, I just want to verify that, because I think it might be bigger.
Okay.
Because, because major manufacturers do sell up to seventy-two inch, and it's still legal, so they may have updated it at some point, so that's why I was just, I want to make sure that's correct.
We can do that. All right, anyone else, would anyone else like to speak to it? Maggie, were there any emails or phone calls that need to be added in for the record?
There were not.
All right, one last call, all right, with that, then we'll close the public hearing. And then all this will come to the next meeting, Maggie.
Or, or the, otherwise it is in your packet, so you can discuss it now, and you can vote on it, if you feel comfortable.
There is vote, you know.
Usually when it's like, like on there as a public hearing, you're able to.
Sixty-five inches or less would rim to rim.
I think they're, they, when they update it, will we be able to adjust our ordinance?
Yeah, our.
Okay.
Yeah, so our definitions in here, we can, like we use, it says all-terrain vehicles as defined by Minnesota statute, including class-one and two. So we, we're kind of trying to connect into the state statute, but we can.
But when they, if, if they.
Yeah, yeah, we would have to amend it.
It sounds like it's getting updated, it hasn't updated yet.
Okay, okay.
So I'm just.
And I'm fine, I mean, if we think it's, is it gonna be soon, do we think?
By, I think by the end of the year is what.
And you just amend your ordinance?
Yeah, we'd have to amend it, we'd have to go through all the processing again and do the same, all the same stuff, posting it, public hearing.
Or can we just?
Say to meet state guidelines?
That's what I was gonna say, why don't we just change it to?
To meet, yeah.
To meet, you know, per state guidelines of class-two ATV.
Yeah, then that way, when they change, we change.
Pretty much, yep. And we don't have to keep bringing this back.
Right.
Any other discussion on the public hearing, on the ATVs, on taking a look at that, or keeping that as is, that's been the ordinance? Because they're not licensed, I think that's the right way to keep it as is, keeping the class ones. Still not allowing it, but that's my view on it.
So is that just the class ones that aren't allowed, or is it tied to all?
Just the class, class ones have not been allowed, and we're changing the ordinance now to allow class two.
I was told over in the neighborhood, not like, not like pulled over, but I was told, because mine's a side-by-side, technically a UTV. And I was told that there is no operation, so what's that?
That is correct.
That was correct.
Yes.
And now what we're doing is changing it to allow it.
Yep.
All right, any, any further discussion? Clarification needed? All right, then I'll look for a motion to approve the ATV ordinance, two thirty-one, with the changes in our packet, with one additional change to clarify the class-two size to meet state requirements. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, thanks for coming in.
So now you could drive it on the road?
Well, not yet, so.
Not yet.
It has to be posted, so.
It's posted.
Okay, Megan, that's like seven one A.
Okay, so seven one eight is, we have Watertown Mayor Superintendent Darren Shuler here. He was recently appointed to his position with Watertown Mayor's School District, and he is here today to introduce himself to the council, and council to introduce themselves to him.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Dodge, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and again, Darren Shuler, new superintendent, Watertown Mayor Public Schools, and I was hired in August, just in the midst of the fun of the start of a new school year and a COVID school year and that. I, just a little bit about myself, I'm a nineteen eighty-seven Watertown Mayor graduate, and so for me, coming home was pretty, a pretty neat experience. And very welcoming to come back to this area again, I wasn't too far, I was an elementary principal in Delano for the last fifteen years, so I wasn't too far down the road, but great to come back, and again, matter of fact, I attend a second grade right across the hallway here. So some great memories of the old elementary building that once stood here, so, so anyways, just a little bit, just a quick recap, but I can open up for questions, too, that you have. Again, my purpose tonight was just to say hello, introduce myself, and let you know, you know, again, to be an ear and to help in any way I can to support the schools, Watertown Mayor Public Schools. So I'll hand a card out here, too, at the end, so you can reach me at any point in time. But some really exciting times right now in our, in our, in our school district, and I think with the support of the City of Mayor, certainly, and our communities, the passing of the referendum was a huge step, and just to give you a little bit of update there, we are in the process of starting to accept bids for those projects. And right now, there's really four projects happening, the elementary building is getting some work done, on some acoustical work that needs to be kind of reimagined and better suited for student work in the commons areas. The middle school is getting some major kind of look, remodel job is there, that building was built in nineteen ninety-two, so it needed a nice remodel. The media center in there is also getting remodeled, as well as our high school cafeteria and media center as well. So those are some of the bigger parts of each of those projects, and then lastly, our athletic field and track will be remodeled as well here. That project will start this spring, and with the hopes of being able to play on that next fall and the fall football season, assuming that it's back on track here with the regular season. So, again, all those projects are starting to move forward, the athletic field probably being the last to go out to bid, probably in January, but the three other projects are gonna be bid here in the next couple of weeks, and then awarding of bids is shortly thereafter, and then we're moving forward. So, really exciting, it's gonna be exciting times to upgrade some of our facilities, we're looking forward to that as well. Just a little bit, too, on our current situation, as you know, in the COVID world, we are certainly in-person in the elementary, that means our students are coming to elementary school, K through four, every day. Looks pretty much the same as a typical school year, other than these guys on our face, and, you know, I can, I can be real honest, and our staff and our students are doing a really good job. That was probably one of my biggest fears coming into the school year, is to ask a five or six-year-old to wear a mask for a full day, and to be honest, they're doing a really nice job. It's not easy, they take mask breaks at least a couple of times a day to get outside, get some fresh air, you know, those type of things. Lunch is in the classrooms, that's a change, a little different in the elementary building. Again, we're trying to keep our cohorts of students together to minimize any, you know, spread of the virus. And then in the middle school and high school, we're a hybrid model, so those students come on a Monday, Thursday, or a Tuesday, Friday, with Wednesday being more of a distance learning day. So again, that's working well, as well, so, so again, that's our plan, as of right now, obviously, our Carver County numbers are starting to rise, and we're all starting to watch those closely. We are advised by a number of folks in the, in the Carver County Health Department, and also our state regional advisors give us information on our really, on practically a daily basis on where our rates are. And with that being said, I really want to commend both City of Mayor and Watertown, our numbers have stayed fairly small, and our school numbers have stayed very small. And in fact, I think within the last reach, we've had three positive cases currently in the elem, excuse me, in the school for students, and only one case with a staff member. What we're finding, I guess the biggest concern we have, is as the numbers rise, students obviously are being put into quarantine. For example, today, we had a quarantine JV volleyball team, and again, what happens there is staff members who are potentially parents are needing to stay home and quarantine with their child. So staffing is gonna become a bigger issue for us in the next couple of weeks here, and hopefully, we can stay in the model that we're in for the longer period here. So, that's a brief update in terms of how the school year has turned out, and again, opening it up for any questions, if you had any.
On the learning, on the learning model, then, on the days when the students go in, high school or junior, I assume if they're at home, they can always zoom in if need be on those days, I mean.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Still doing Zoom?
Yep, there's a couple of different models there, so if you're at home, some teachers are doing, it's called a synchronous model, so they're teaching to the students in front of them, like I would be right now to you, and the same token, they're videotaping it out to the students sitting at home, so we have some different models, different teachers doing some different things, but that's pretty common, that's called synchronous. Asynchronous is when they're actually teaching to the students in front of them, but not teaching out to those students at home, and they may be giving them assignment to work on, on their off day, if you will, to complete, but also checking in throughout the day. So it's a, it's a wearing on staff, I will say that, that's a, that's a hard model to kind of teach in both worlds, in the digital world or distance world and in person. So I think that's been a struggle for folks, too, to kind of, you know, balance that, if you will, so, yeah, that's a good question.
Congratulations on your appointment.
Yeah, thank you.
We're working with you, it's, it's great.
Likewise, yeah, and again, I'll give you my card, if there's anything you need from me, feel free to reach out at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Maggie, with that, then we'll move to seven one B, approval of the pond maintenance policy and procedure.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, in front of you today is the Pond Maintenance Policy and Procedures. Staff is asking you to review and consider approval of the Pond Maintenance Policy and Procedures document. So as you know, in August two thousand nineteen, the city council approved having the city engineer Bolton and Mink do a store, citywide stormwater pond assessment review and create a document on the findings. Those were brought to the city council, the full document for review, and council was very appreciative of that information. It did highlight every pond in that report, and it included inspection information that, that included kind of the status of inlets, outlets, how to, how we're gonna access ponds moving forward, and then the integrity of the ponds and vegetation. So the report, what is important information for our long-term planning and maintenance of the ponds, because we do need to, as, as all the ponds are kind of getting to that twenty-year mark, we're gonna have to start planning ongoing cleaning of the inlets and outlets, and making sure that they're running and working properly. So, what we are doing, the city engineer is recommending that the city budget an annual maintenance to, and staff is proposing annual maintenance to perform work on specific ponds. So, in conjunction with that report that was done by the city engineer, the city drafted a pond policy and procedure document. It highlights information on the purpose of the ponds, how they work, and then the maintenance responsibility, not only by the city, but homeowners as well. So it provides guidance as to when, how, and what the city will do to maintain the stormwater system. It also includes guidance on educating residents of their responsibilities. And so the goal of the city would be to actually provide those education materials to residents from time to time. It just includes things like keeping grass out of the, and debris out of the ponds, and just making sure, you know, way, pet waste is picked up and stuff. Just, it, it helps maintain, or with the long-term keeping of the ponds. So, in the policy, just to make it manageable for staff, the ongoing plan is to do a rotating five-year maintenance plan, so it does break up the city into five different sections, and so what would happen is Public Works would take on a section per year and do maintenance in the inlets and outlets, and then we would also assess kind of a bigger picture of each pond in that section and see what else can be done to, to make, if, if for some reason the pond is, needs more work, intensive work. So in, so with that, you do have the Pond Policy and Procedure document in your packet. It does include an inspection list that we would be using when we do our inspections, and then it includes the five-year rotation map. So with that, we're asking for approval of this document, and any questions or comments?
Any questions or clarification needed?
I do have a couple of questions, first of all, in our pond maintenance assessment that we had done, there were quite a few that were hi, hi, high risk.
Okay, yeah.
Or high priority.
Right, right, right.
So instead of following the zones, would it be better just to start with the high priorities and then work our way down?
I would say maybe we should, maybe year one would be assessing the high-risk ones, and then starting with the one-to-five-year rotation.
And then?
That's a good point, I think we did have some discussion on that, that that would be a good way to do it, and then for the policy, then get it into quadrants or fifths, I guess. But yeah, we have to get those high priority ones. But yeah, we have to get those high priority ones at least looked at.
Right. And then I know we're doing the monitoring and inspection. So we're, the city is responsible for the maintenance too, which is removing the trees and woody vegetation within 25 feet and all that? That's going to be the city's responsibility? Page 52.
Oh, 52.
Says vegetation management, remove trash and debris, et cetera.
Yeah, so I think our response.
A little bit further.
Oh, sorry. Oh, 52, I'm sorry. Yeah, so when we get out there, when we assess each pond, we'll be, especially in the inlets and outlets, we will definitely be removing vegetation and trees or anything else that's blocking the, the flow. I might have to get clarification of the entire structure, but I do know we will be, you know, going, just assessing for sure the inlets and outlets and making sure there aren't any other obstructions and other areas that are affecting the pond.
Yeah, because my, my concern is when, under that maintenance, it makes it sound like that this is our public works department that is responsible for this, which includes the removal of the trash and debris every one to three months. And I'm sitting there thinking, you know, are we going to need another, like, public workers, pond worker?
No, that's true. That's true.
So I, I think really kind of spelling out what is the city's responsi- responsibility versus the homeowners.
Okay.
That was my question too on that. We just don't have the bandwidth to do that one, one every three months annually, maybe, if it was, but.
Right. I know at least on our pond, I mean, the homeowners are pretty good, and there's a couple of people that will take like a little boat out there and grab, you know, a kiddie pool that flew in there from a storm. But I mean, so I, that's where I want the clarification. Whose responsibility is that going to be? What's that? Well, when you're trying to get off a kiddie pool, that's.
I mean, it's a city.
Or other things that have flown in the pond from a storm.
It's a city, city property. It's a city pond. I mean, ultimately, we're going to be the one that have responsibility for that. I don't know if we want to encourage people to go in and clean the pond.
No, but the in and around, because the removal of trash and debris, it says in and around, in and around, so.
Right.
You know, removing the pollutant sources.
Yeah, I think the goal is to, for homeowners is more prevention. Like procedures, just kind of, and then we're trying to be more proactive, yeah.
Here is for the city employees?
Yeah, so the maintenance part is for city employees. So yeah, we might have to relook at how often we're able to get in there and do those.
In the homeowner responsibilities.
We can make a motion and try to change that, if that's the only section we need to change, try to change that now and just as part of the motion. Or we can table this, take it back, and Maggie can meet with Bolton and Mink or Public Works and get some guidance on that. But to me, that's got to at least be, I mean, annually is, there's 40 ponds.
Forty-five.
Forty-five ponds.
I mean, I think we have to really look at, can we, we have the manpower to even do once a year? And whose responsibility? So I think we should not, I think we should table it and.
I agree.
And really put together something that works well for everybody so that, and it's very clear.
I'm not reading that maintenance part as that's the city's responsibility. I'm reading it that as a statement in the document, that these are the things that need to be done to maintain the ponds.
And I get that, but it can be very misleading.
Right.
Because right below that says homeowner responsibilities.
We should separate.
Exactly.
Why to take some responsibility? And I do have a question about the people who do have current docks and boats and stuff in the ponds. What do we, are we making, well, we have a policy. Are we going to start enforcing that?
Well, the problem is, is we don't really have a policy for that. Like we, I've worked with, like the, I've looked at the ordinance, and that's kind of why we're trying to create something.
Where is the, where are the statements coming from that say the city does not allow this?
Well, that would be what we're creating in our policy.
Okay, so you're intending this to be the policy? Yeah, then I definitely would separate.
I think we should move this to a work session.
Yep. Yep, I think we should table it and we'll bring it to a work session.
We've got some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is a really big deal. And we spent how much money on the thing? I think it's important that we do this right the first time.
I agree. All right, we will table it.
Do I make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table it and move it to a work session.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose the same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, seven one C CARES Act Resolution 11.09.20.47.
All right, so included in your packet is a resolution for, we do have to submit a report every month to Minnesota, I'm blanking, Minnesota Management and Budget. So I'm not changing anything on that list. What I am asking for consideration is, it has come to my attention by, there's just been a lot of back and forth in the last month at, between local, state, county, or local, county, state, and federal government as to whether police and first responder budgets can be covered with CARES Act funds. And so I just felt like I needed to at least bring it to your attention. So there, it has been, and I did include it, I know there's handouts over there too, kind of some guidance on how this all works, what it would allow if the city feels the need or would like to. It does provide the ability to use CARES funds to cover payroll expenses. In this case, it would be for our public safety contract with the sheriff, the Carver County Sheriff's Department. And the, the eligible public, or the eligible cost would be about $69,586. So the reason why it's coming to you now is because, again, it's been going back and forth. There has been a lot of discussion as to whether this would be covered and whether it wouldn't. But it has been by the Minnesota Management and Budget. They have verified with the federal government and back and forth, and everybody agrees now that this is something that can be covered. And so with that, I'm asking you tonight if that's something, we do have about 100, over, a little over 100,000 that we have left that will go to the county, Carver County, to use if, and then if they don't use it, it'll go back to the state. And if the state doesn't use it, it'll go back to the federal government. So I just felt like it was something that you need to be aware of, and if it's something that we would consider using for our, to cover our 2020, or part of our 2020 contract. Well, that's the thing. It's, it's a, I, I'm, I don't know. And that's the findings that nobody really. There, there, what they're going off of is they're going off of, they're just taking our contract, and they're saying from March 1st to November 15th, that is our contract cost. And what they're saying is that that can be covered under CARES Act funds. That's the only, that's the algorithm that they're using that can be reimbursed. Again, I know that there's been a lot of discussion on it being COVID-related, but again, this has been brought back and forth, and it's been determined that even though it's already budgeted for, which kind of goes against what we were originally told, in this case, it's, it is allowed, so.
Who came up with this number?
The county.
And the county agrees.
Yep.
The communities can use this CARES Act money for a budgeted item for our sheriff's contract.
Right, so yeah. Other communities are doing it in Carver County. Carver County itself is doing it. It's, it, it's really city, it's really city to city, and I just, I mean, I just felt like it was something I needed to at least bring, so.
Can you go over the timelines and why we have to talk about it today and, and what, when you have to report?
Right. So our timeline is, ends November 15th. So we have until November 15th to make decisions and make purchases. We then have to, anything that's left unspent by November 20th has to go to the county. And then I have to do a final report on the 24th to Minnesota Management and Budget.
Minnesota Management and Budget thinks this is acceptable.
It's, it's gone through every level of government and I'm, yeah, so.
This kind of goes back into the whole discussion we had the other night.
Right.
Free money's not always free money. I'm not going to go into that again.
No, I, I understand that.
I mean, I guess if, I hate, I hate to. My, my only thought on that, and I agree with free money isn't free money, and, and just looking for ways to spend it frivolously is one thing. But this could definitely, we take 69 grand reimbursed this year. If we can put that towards the 2021 contract, our budget right now, that affects every person in this community now.
Yeah, does it lower our levy?
We can lower, take 69,000 off our budget of next year.
Right. I don't know. I don't know off, offhand right now. It's possible, but I'd have to talk to a financial advisor if that's feasible.
There's got to be a way to use the money for some.
Right, right.
So right now, say in 2020, we have a budget for 10,000 for legal. And also, we spent 15,000 this year. Where do we get that extra five grand? It comes from somewhere, so we, we got to be able to get that money back in there somehow, even if.
Money was there to be, I hate to say spent, but I mean, it was allocated out. I, I, I don't have a problem with it. I think that if you want to just run it by your attorney to make sure that they think it's okay, and your guidance is to do it, then.
I did. I mean, I did talk to Tim. He, again, he has interpreted it both ways. So he, he was under this understanding that it was COVID-related at first. I've talked to multiple people, and it's just kind of, I don't know.
Downside, if we approve it and for some change and it happens, they say we can't, well, then we can't, we're not out anything. The money goes back to the, I mean, it just transfers back to the county. County is going to spend it how they see fit.
Some of that money ends up going back to the healthcare system.
Some will, yeah, some will. But I think this affects this, now, it's not looking for ways, you know, to upgrade things or do things from a COVID standpoint. But it still seems odd to me from every, when this came out and it was all based on, it can't, it goes for COVID and it can't go to a pre-budgeted item, and obviously sheriff's contract is pre-budgeted, so. But I think if the county, if, if, and the state and the board allows it, I, I don't know why, I, I think we should. And then somehow, we got to figure out and get creative how we can earmark that money then for 2021. We can lower some of that, the budget item, and get our tax rate down right where we want it to be, right at the, you know, 49, 50%, where. Any other questions on that clarification? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 11.09.20.47 with the addition of $69,586 earmarked towards the sheriff's 2020 contract.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same sign. Motion carries five zero. That then will take us to seven one D, the financial audit that was pulled from the consent.
So my reason for pulling that again is just basically, for the most part, it's a $31,800 bill. I just think the public deserves like an explanation and understanding of it. So my questions are this, what was, what was our, what was our cost last year for this service?
I don't have the exact cost in front of me. I, I don't, if anything, it, I think maybe went up a couple grand.
A couple thousand?
Yep.
So this, the $5,000 that they're charging us to do the long-term plan? That's something that they do every year?
Right.
And is it something that needs to be done every year? It's a long-term plan. So like, how much?
Right. So what it does, and this is something that goes before me, like before I started. So we've been doing this long-term plan every year. It's not something that we, it is essential to do every year. It just kind of takes, captures where we're at in the moment. Again, like, for example, it just adds another year on to, like, it kind of is something, I mean, it's something we could do every other year. But it's like, so park commission, let's say we assumed certain levies for park commission last year or this year. Because our budget and our city growth wasn't what we thought it was going to be, it, it changes the park commission. So that would then update kind of the long-term projects for the next few years and kind of shift things around. So it is helpful in some ways, but definitely not, I mean, it could be something that's done every other year, for sure.
And, and I think we need to look at that from a project standpoint. This last year, with all the projects going on with the water tower, with the, the well, with the, the new tank or the fire station that we've been discussing, I mean, these, it is valuable. We do need to know that. We need to know where we're sitting on our debt, where it's, where some's falling off, where we got to add it, and getting creative with that. So I think it's a year to year, but yeah, we, we need to still keep an eye on that.
And then my last one was this is budgeted for?
It is something that we, well, this is, this is going to be budgeted for in 2021. So this is something that we plan ahead for because we, it's, it's required by law. So it will be in the 2021 budget.
Thank you.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the fees. $26,800 for the 2020 audit, $5,000 for the long-term financial management update with Abdo Akkumayr.
Make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion, a second, any further discussion?
So your total is 31 eight, not 31?
Correct. Any other discussion? I agree, Tice, on some of these, and I struggled on this one, partly is, is it non-controversial? Because we have to do the audit every year? Yeah, but it is a high dollar amount. The 5,000 long-term financial management plan, although we do it, that's, that would, to me, would be a part that we'd always want to discuss versus consent. And to your point, I always need to see what we paid the previous year to see what kind of increases they're doing so we can manage. You know, do we go off RFPs? This is still the firm we want to continue to use, and we, we got to stay up on that. So it's, some of that I'd like to see in there, and if you could even send out an email and let us know what, what it was from last year, that'd be helpful. Or put it in your weekly report would be fine, too. It is a high dollar amount, but again, non-controversial because we have to, we have to do it, so I, I.
That was my other line of thinking as well, like.
Went back and forth on that one.
This is going up several thousand dollars every year?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty much.
And as they get the data, some of the data, they're reusing and reusing their templates. And, but, you know, they're here for three, four days. They, I mean, they do go through everything. We get their recommendations, and it's up to us to make sure to take their recommendations and really do something with it to make sure that that money is really getting used appropriate, too, to make sure we close out all the findings. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right. All right, seven to a public works department.
So this is kind of an update from the personnel committee. So why it is at the council tonight is just to discuss, discuss potential restructuring of the public works department. So we, the personnel committee has been discussing the potential restructuring of the public works department for a little bit of time. As you know, in two thousand eighteen, the personnel committee and the city council did an admin study that highlighted the ideal structure of the city, of city personnel. The study did include the creation of a public works director position at that time. The department currently consists of a public works worker one and a public works worker two. But since two thousand nineteen, the positions have been unioned. So, and then also some further developments is that in September twenty-twenty, the employee in the public works worker two position resigned, and a new employee subsequently hired to fill that vacancy. But since then, the personnel committee has been discussing, again, the ideal structure for the positions in the department. And to reflect the nature of the work being performed by employees and, and future needs of the city. So the personnel committee is considering the creation of a new public works worker, public works lead or a similar position, the position will remain part of the union and will likely be classified above the public works worker one and two positions. With the appropriate grade determined by, I'm thinking the consultant that did our admin study, so they would do the grading system on it, that position. The position description is what I'm working on or would be working on if, if approved, and it would be drafted to account for the performance and duty, other duties and responsibilities related to items such as operation of the city's wastewater and water plants and the limited direction of work to other employees in that department. So to move for, to continue moving forward with this process and creating the position, it would, in accordance with the requirements of the collective bargaining agreement and state law, the personnel committee is requesting the city council approve, starting the process of developing a new position description and having the position graded by an outside consultant to then be presented by the city council for formal consideration and action.
So a little background on that, you know, as we met and were trying to figure out positions, and we talked about this director position a while ago, kind of got to the point where it just didn't seem appropriate at this time to have that high of a level with, with the smaller group. Some of the problem, some of the concerns that came in with the personnel committee was the union now in the bargaining unit and having someone creating jobs that are now out of the union and now if that person, whoever it may be, then is taking work away from a union position, and could we have problems with that? So it became messy from that aspect, so then we looked at this, you know, we maybe, when we thought director was maybe too high of a level to start at, we looked at a supervisory role, well, it's the same thing, they're now out of the, that would be a position out of the union, same thing. Do we have a problem now if that person started doing some of the snow plowing and took work from someone in the bargaining unit and would start getting grievance and things like, so it became real messy on, on how we could handle that, but we saw a need a need to do something here.
So are you saying that you, the personnel committee feels like this person, if they were considered administration, not in the union, wouldn't have enough to do? They'd end up doing what?
We'd have to watch on some of that because they become a supervisory job, so they shouldn't be doing some of the, the work of the workers. And now, are we short people now, would we have to hire someone to have two people, to still have two public works employee, you know, one or two, so. That's where a lot of the problems and discussions came into and it got real messy.
But you're talking about hiring someone anyway.
We were.
Public works people, one supervisor.
We were talking about creating a new one and posting it internally.
And then hiring someone else.
No, that's what we didn't wanna do, we didn't wanna hire someone else, that's why we don't want it to be a supervisory job and they're out of the bargaining unit where they can't do some of that work, because then we would have to add another person. So then we came up with the lead, we thought.
So you're dealing with two public, two public works.
Two public works, we thought we'd create a lead position, or, or that was our vision, to create a lead position that will take care of all the day-to-day stuff, you know, and get, get compensated for doing that and kind of running the day-to-day but not having someone directly report, so they're not a supervisory role, so they stay in the bargaining unit. And we thought that would be a good start and a good stepping stone, then to start creating, as the public works grows and we do start hiring people, then yeah, then we would create a supervisory role, that would be out of the bargaining unit. And then, but we would have more people that who would handle the snow plowing, the emergencies, the things like that. So that was kind of our vision. It became a little, you know, it became messy, obviously, with the bargaining unit and that, and we had to be, you know, you gotta be very careful. Obviously, we weren't doing this because we had plans for some of these supervisory jobs, but it, you know, some of the discussion was we gotta make sure we're not purposely creating positions to pull people out of, out of the union, trying to break it, you know, so we were very conscious of that and we wanna make sure we did the right thing, so we thought this would be a good stepping stone.
And you also have to be careful that when you create this new position, you don't tie yourself from getting an administrator type of a position in there, because that position would then take away
Yeah, it'd be clear in the job description. And the bargaining unit would have to approve, that's a new position, so the bargaining unit, we're gonna have to go to the, or to the union. And they're gonna have to approve the new position and the new pay scale and, and that, so, and we feel that that'll be.
But one of our concerns during bargaining was that our hands would be tied on getting a supervisor, because they would ultimately be doing some of the things that we're asking public works worker one to do.
Well, that's why, and that's why we're not doing it right now, when we do create that supervisor job, it'll be, it'll be a supervisory role.
But then he'll take away from the union, the union worker.
Depending on what they're doing, because no one in the union right now is operating the plant, the water plant, but, and, and we're not even talking supervisory role right now, so.
We're just talking lead.
It's just talking.
I'm saying, don't tie your hands for the future.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And it was something that we were concerned about when we were bargaining, that we were going to.
We were gonna do a supervisory and we'll keep that, if we, when we create that, we'll, we're gonna have to have a bigger, we're gonna have to have a bigger public works department before.
Right.
Before we can do that, we have to with the union.
But if you have this position doing some of those supervisory roles?
Which position, the, the lead?
The new one, yeah, the lead.
Be doing supervisor role, the, everyone will still report to the, to the administrator. This lead will be given the day-to-day direction on priorities on which park we need mow, okay, we're gonna mow today, we're gonna do this tomorrow. We're getting this, you know, kind of managing, or not managing, but giving direction from the day-to-day priorities. Priorities through the administrator.
Or the go-to person for, you know, lower-level employees, it's kind of like a charge nurse in a hospital, you have absolutely zero responsibilities as a supervisor, but you're the go-to person if no one else has questions and concerns.
And then the intent. And we, we gotta see what the job description has, so this is just to get approval to start moving forward with the job description, because we have to get it looked at. So we keep the Fair Pay Act, and our fair pay and everything is set from all that aspect.
Where are you planning on being the consultant, like who's gonna? Are we going back to?
I was, I was gonna reach out to David Drones, they, they're the ones that did it for us before.
The study for us.
Well, and they wrote the rest of it.
Have all our job descriptions and they can help with the, so we can get the, the range set up.
But being a smaller, unique, one, two-person public works department, my question is, is who's gonna be developing this new position description? Are, are public works employees gonna have any say in that, or is that strictly gonna be this consultant, or is it?
I'm just gonna curious how it's gonna go. I'm gonna, I'm going to start the process, but I think that it will then have to go to the union for final, like for their.
But will our public works?
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. People have input on?
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need some input on that, just from some of the day-to-day stuff and, and some of that role, so we'll get some job description, we're not gonna recreate the wheel, we'll get, there's lead ones out there from other communities, we'll get them like we typically do, start redlining them and tweak them to our, so they line up for our city. And then the intent or our vision was on this role is to have that person manage the plants also. And right now in the contract, we're paying an extra stipend of five thousand dollars a year for that. The intent is to take that and roll that into the hourly salary, so we don't have that stipend on there, so it's just a one, a one role thing now, and that lead person is the one running the plants versus now how it's set up.
Right.
So that's the vision on that too, so it, it may seem like, oh wow, it's a four-dollar increase, well, two, two dollars and forty cents of that is a five thousand dollars a year to run the plant.
So when this goes to the union, will they have, are they expected to counteroffer and do kind of what we did, I mean, are we kind of starting over with that little piece of the contract?
Yeah, it'll be a memorandum, MOU, a memorandum of understanding added into the contract or an addendum to the contract.
And will they be bargaining back and forth?
Well, it depends on what they offer and, and what they, I mean, it's, it's a group, they could take it to vote right away and vote on it if they like it and they don't have to come back with anything, so if they're in agreement with where it is, the unit, which is two people, can vote on it and if it passes, it passes. We, we feel there's gonna be very little discussion back and forth. And we, we had Tim on our last meeting and he feels the same.
Are you expecting the pay grade to change on any of the other workers? Okay, so you're kind of keeping them.
Those are already signed contracts, that's already our contract, yep, we have no intent to go in and change anything.
Okay.
It's when they're, it's to create this new, new position, roll some of the duties into it to get rid of that extra five thousand, and that's the intent of it. And the intent is to try to move forward fairly quick with this and, and, and get this done by the end of the year. Any other questions? With that, I'll look for a motion to allow the, the administrator to begin the, the process of creating a public works lead position.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, that will take us to everything, reports, Eric, can anything report on?
Yeah, so my update is that the representative that was here at the last council meeting has been out here both, the both weeks to, to write down every address that had a different cart size, so any, he did state that some are ones that requested a smaller bin, but that any that were not matching the ninety-six, he would reach out to and confirm which size they wanted, or. Well, I, I have an email to him, I have not heard a response back, but.
Good, yeah, let's follow up, see if we can get resolution on that. Tyce, anything, was that everything, Eric, I'm sorry, Tyce?
Nope.
Nikki?
Nope, park board's tomorrow, right?
Maggie, real quick, do you wanna just give a quick narration on election results and how it's happened? Why it's, why it hasn't come for final approval to council on this meeting, like it typically does from the canvassing board? Just so anyone listening knows why it's delayed.
Yeah, so I can try and provide a simple.
Yep.
Yeah, so usually they, the canvassing results are due, well, they are due within three to ten days of the election, with COVID, there were some state, temporary state law changes that allowed absentee ballots to be received to, back to the county, in our case, to the county if postmarked by November third. I believe that it, it turned over for the presidential results, like the presidential results had to be in that evening, but according to the county elections office, Minnesota is still taking in those ballots for their local, state and local results. They're also keeping track of them separately, so if like the court gets overturned, that those ballots would then also be counted towards the presidential race.
So basically, we're waiting on the county, make sure they're, make sure they're in, so we.
So the.
Give us final numbers, so it can come to us today.
Right, exactly.
And then we'll be having a special meeting on Friday when we get the number, because we still have to be within our ten days of the election, so.
Right.
That's the delay on things, thank you. And I have nothing to report, so with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, she's on vacation.